If you would, please silence your cell phones and be advised that these proceedings are being recorded. Those of you who are here with us physically tonight, when you're in the council chamber and desire to address the city council during the meeting, please complete a request to speak for them. They are available at the entrance and presented to the city clerk. Speakers will be called upon, whether they are present or via Zoom, at the appropriate time, and each person will be allowed three minutes speaking time. Our city clerk has a Zoom broadcasting announcement to make.
Thank you, Mayor. As of June 15th, the City of Grand Terrace reopened its public meetings. If you would like to participate telephonically and speak on an agenda item, you can access the meeting by dialing 1-669-900-9128, enter meeting ID number 831-6525-9494, and enter password number 585-456. You will be placed in the waiting room muted until it is your turn to speak. You may also submit your comments by sending them to ccpubliccomment@grandterres-ca.gov. City of Grand Terrace thanks you for doing your part preventing the spread of COVID-19.
Thank you. At this time, we will call to order a regular meeting of the City of Grand Terrace for July 27th, 2021. If you would, please stand for a moment of silence in place of invocation tonight, and then leading our pledge of allegiance will be Josh I. Mary from Alshire in Winder. Let's remember all of those who might be fighting wildfires along our state this time All right, thank you, Mr. I. Mary.
Right under your arc. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, may we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Allen.
I'm here.
Councilmember Wilson.
I am here.
Councilmember Robles.
Present.
Mayor Protem Hussey.
Present.
Mayor Magna Bo.
Present.
Madam Mayor, you have a form.
Thank you. Do we have any reordering of additions to or removal of items from the agenda tonight?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so we'll move to our first item, which is special presentations, and we have David Mlinarsky from Grand T1 Traffic. He will give us a traffic management plan presentation, but I think city staff has an introduction for this item.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. For the record, Steve Weiss, you all know me. I felt compelled to schedule this special presentation with you based on informing the council what is occurring on one side of town and just explaining the overall process on a project that is being constructed on the north side of town. Recently, the applicant, who is Grand T1, received approval by the city council back in April of last year for a conditional use permit to do a trailer storage facility. Since that time, they have been working diligently with staff to comply with conditions and get to the next point in the development of the site. They do not need a building permit for the site, but they do need a precise grading permit. Up to this point, they have provided the necessary technical studies to be issued a rough grading permit, which is pretty much what that means, is it's grubbing the land to get it prepared for the next step, which is to actually build the facility and put in all of the necessary improvements in the area. They're not quite ready yet to get the precise grading permit. However, we have been working with them and advising them of the next steps to take. Staff has learned, and we have been working closely with the applicant and also with the public. There has been a few missteps from the applicant, and they've wholeheartedly, you know, admitted to it and are trying to make good on everything, and we believe there is a solution to this. But part of this is that they are going to be speaking about developing a traffic management plan that is a condition on the project prior to opening up their operation. So they can explain this, but I want to explain that we are aware of the geography of the area, the history of the area, and some of the challenges to the area. So I'm not doing a full-on PowerPoint presentation. I just want to orient the council of where we are. So if you look on the map there where you see Vivienda, and you go down the hill towards Lacadena, just above there is the applicant's property. That's in yellow. And you can see the different streets up there, and it's bounded by the Santa Ana River Trail, and it's also bounded by railroad tracks, Railroad Canyon Road. See if this will work. Yeah, this is Railroad Canyon Road. This is Vivienda, and this is Terrace Road. And the red, excuse me, not Terrace, Walnut, excuse me, and this area here is the corporate boundaries. This red is for the city of Colton. So Colton surrounds a good part of this area, just so you're aware, and it's actually Colton all the way to the corner of Barton and North Terrace Road. So part of the challenge on a project like this, or even living up in these neighborhoods, is there is a proclivity for larger vehicles to get into these areas and get lost. Part of the conditions on the project is that the applicant needs to educate the drivers to not use those neighborhoods. They're strictly conditioned not to use those neighborhoods. So if there are some miscues, the city is being made aware of it right away, and we actually do appreciate if there's any citizen concern about that, because every comment they make, we take to heart. So we have been working with, you know, having a proactive enforcement of this and also explaining that there cannot be any operation of the, it's only construction right now, and it's not even very much construction. But because there has been some concern in the last week, the applicant has shut down their operation until a traffic management plan can be developed and approved by the city. So at this point, so, you know, some of the choke points, that there have been some vehicles noticed as along Grand Terrace Road and by the trailer park, Carhartt, and because of GPS challenges and other things, they've gotten lost in some of these neighborhoods. But what the goal of the city is, is to continually work on a traffic management plan with the applicant. So the applicant's vehicles will only go down North Terrace Road into Barton. That's for construction-related work, and that's for permanent operations. So I just want to let you know, that's what's required of the project. As far as the rest of the neighborhoods, there is other challenges. There are other vehicles. It's had a rich history of vehicles getting lost in these neighborhoods, and we want to solve that. That's really, we really, really value the neighbors' concerns here, and we really want to solve them. There is, you have an M22 up against a residential zone. You've got Walnut. You've got businesses along that area, too. So the idea is that there will be some industrial activity in some of these areas, but they cannot, these cannot be a cut through for industrial traffic, like large trucks, things like that. We are awaiting to get an improvement plan from the applicant for improvements to North Terrace Road, which will provide curb and gutter and widening and correct signage. I know there has been some concern about some signs that were put up. Well, they were experiments, but the correct signage will be put up. It was removed, but it was innocently put up to try to figure out how the best way to identify signage in the area has been, because it has been a challenge in the past. I just want to close my remarks by saying, we sincerely apologize if there's been inconveniences to the neighborhood. We take it seriously, and we're here to work with every neighbor in the community on this, and we want to make, and also with the applicant on their traffic management plan to ensure that it's successful in the best interest of the city. So, and also, this is a presentation. This isn't to change the project. The project is already approved. We want to move on. We want to make sure that this project is going to be a successful project for everyone in the City of Grand Terrace. I believe the council can, you know, can comment on this, but I would keep it to, in relation to the traffic management, to the presentation, and also would appreciate if you could hear the applicant now. Thank you. Those are my remarks.
Thank you, Acting City Manager Weiss, and our city attorney would like to say a few words as well.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just following up on interim city manager Weiss's final comments, again, yes, this is a presentation. This is not an action item, so we are only here to receive information. Absolutely feel free to ask questions, to get clarification if necessary, but it's not an action item or direction or anything that would come of this. If anything, it's just a receiving file. I just want to make that clear for the record. And secondly, as Mr. Weiss indicated, the CUP did go before the planning commission, did go before the city council, was adopted and approved. There was no legal challenge, so that CUP is binding. Tonight's presentation is not a modification of that CUP. It is not reopening the CUP. There is no land use entitlement that is before the council for consideration at this time. So I just want to make that clear, more so for the public, that they're aware of that. And lastly, the traffic management plan was a condition of approval in the adopted CUP, and that traffic management plan is to be approved by staff, not the city council or planning commission. So tonight, it's really more just presenting information about that plan to the council and to the public, and definitely wanting to hear the public if they have any comments, so that when Mr. Weiss does finally approve it, you know, he could take those comments into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gara. With that, tonight, we have David Mlinarsky. Please give us your presentation.
Huh, there it is.
That's better. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. David Mlinarsky with TransTech, representing Grand Terrace One LLC. I would like to give this to staff to distribute. I have, I think, seven or eight copies. This doesn't necessarily address the traffic issue, but it is some material that I think you might find useful to just have in your files. And I'll start by saying that Mr. O'Brien, who's actually the applicant and owner of the property, would have loved to have been here, but he had a prearranged surgery that his wife is basically under the knife as we speak. So I'm here in his place, and I'll try to do the best to provide input and answer any questions. And I'd also like to echo what Mr. Weiss indicated. If there have been any inconveniences to the community or to the residents in that area of the city, I'm sure that, speaking for Mr. O'Brien, that's not our intention, nor did we want to be in conflict with any of the requirements, because we understand what those requirements are, and we are going to do our best to continue to abide by them. So with regard to traffic, and I appreciate the graphic being up there, but let me give you a quick overview of what has happened to date. With respect to the current grading operation that your, interim, is that right, interim city manager?
He's the acting city manager?
Acting city manager. The rough grading operation is about 90% complete, and during that operation, there were approximately 200-plus vehicle trips that went to and from the site. We are aware of a couple of instances where a couple of the subcontractors, I believe one was a Robertson's material truck that was bringing concrete to the site. It may have been two Robertson's trucks. We notified the company immediately after being notified by the city that there was a vehicle, I believe, I believe it started on Grand Terrace, and then it ended up doing a turnaround on Vivienda, not near the project, but to the east of the project. And then it found its way back out to Barton Road, and then it went to the site. I believe there might have been another vehicle that, and I want to go through this before I tell you about what we're doing. So we pulled the requisite ticket, and I'm going to send a copy of this ticket from Robertson's to the city for their records, and it clearly indicates on the requisite ticket that the general contractor submitted to the material supplier, no trucks allowed other than Terrace Avenue. So we've tried to go to great lengths to let these contractors know about the sensitivity of the community. We are going to have a conversation with that vendor. I mean, everybody knows Robertson's are a very large company, but, you know, we did put them on notice, that we did get a, I don't want to say a violation, but we got a call from the city. So just capsulizing that, out of 200-plus trips, you know, we had a couple of instances, and again, we're responsible for that, and we're going to continue to try to make sure that doesn't happen again. The project also has been granted a stormwater pollution plan, a SWIP, that manages all of the activities per state guidelines, local guidelines, so that's also been issued by the city, and it's being implemented. We've also worked with the city of Colton in obtaining a connection to their sewer main. For the sewer connection, that needs to go across the street just to serve a caretaker, security guard office onsite. We're working through staff now here at the city to make sure that they're also in agreement, but we processed that with the city of Colton. We're also filing an application for the security guard caretaker shack through planning department per the condition of approval. So that'll be submitted, and that'll be processed through the normal channels. We have also contracted with a professional traffic control company that has prepared a draft plan. We received that plan today. That plan is twofold. It is going to be utilized as an augment to the construction permit for the construction activities, and then we're going to modify it to fit the operation activities once the project is constructed and actually operating. We're going to work with your new city engineer public works director and your acting city manager director to make sure that that plan has the necessary input. The other thing that plan's going to have is it's going to have a detail indicating signage, not only for Terrace Avenue, but for interfacing with Walnut and Vivienda. And then we're also looking at an area-wide exhibit, and that, again, will be vetted through the city staff to include any other signage along that portion of your community, whether it deals with truck traffic, turning movements, restricted parking. For example, one of the signs that we want to install on Terrace Avenue is a prohibition for any stopping or parking at any time. That speaks to the concern that was raised at some of the public hearings about trucks idling or just standing different places on the road. So that plan will be submitted before the end of the week, and then as soon as staff is ready to talk about any further input. The other thing we're doing, well, we indicated, and Mr. Weiss indicated, the Terrace Avenue street improvement plans have been completed. Those are being submitted this week as well, and those will have the same signage and striping details as that traffic management plan has. We have also completed the water situation with Riverside Highland Water Department. As you know, they have several mains crossing the property. One of them, they've actually taken out of commission. The second one, we didn't have to do any improvements other than to just create a service lateral for the caretaker facility and the fire hydrants. We have two onsite fire hydrants per county fire requirement. And then the other thing we did is we extended the lateral to the future community garden site. So all of those improvements have been completed. There was some concern this weekend about some construction activity that was occurring at site. Saturday, it was the contractor trying to wrap up the encasement of the Riverside Highland Water Company's main line, because they're concerned about loading, construction loading. And unfortunately, some of that work spilled over onto Sunday. We, again, remanded the contractor, telling him that there is strict prohibition from doing any work or activity onsite on Sunday. So we've addressed that, but I believe they probably have finished that work now, so that is the only activity that we needed to complete in order to protect the pipeline, because Riverside Highland was concerned about exposure, damage, and we were concerned about liability. One of the reasons, and it's not a justification, but we continue to experience illegal dumping, trespassing on the property, and, you know, we keep working with the property owner, we keep working with some of your other owners in the neighborhood as they advise us about people doing illegal activities. We've also been working with the city of Colton. The Lacadena Great Separation Project is underway, along with some of the other improvements you see to Lacadena. There's been a new traffic signal installed there, street improvements, but it's also impacted the park area where the access is to the Santa Ana Trail. So they approached us a few months ago to work on a interim connection to the trail, which would go underneath the, a pedestrian connection, not vehicular, which would go underneath that railroad right of way where the current underpass is. So we've accommodated both the city and the county in integrating our trail system with their interim system, and that'll be discussed more as we get into this landscape plan, and I'll touch on that before I leave tonight. But, so we've been collaborating with county flood control, with the city of Colton, and with your staff. Preliminary landscape plans are also ready to be submitted for both the community garden and for the amphitheater park. We've worked with a very reputable landscape architect out of Redlands, STB Landscape, same individual that did some of the preliminary work, so those drawings, in fact, we previewed a couple of them with staff last week, and we're going to be submitting a draft for their review so they can provide input before we actually complete the details on the irrigation and the planting and so forth. Community benefit agreement that Mr. Weiss touched on, we had it teed up a while ago, but in the case of erring on being a little cautious, there are some exhibits, landscape exhibits and other exhibits that are contained within that agreement. Now that we have those, I think, far enough along to represent them in a draft agreement, we will attach those and then submit it back to staff for their review and continued processing with your legal counsel, and eventually it'll come in front of this body, I believe, as In general, given our current situation with where we believe all the plans are at, and precise grading plan, hydrology, water quality, I understand we can pick up those comments from the city tomorrow. There's another set of comments on that sewer connection, so we'll pick those plans up tomorrow. I think they're pretty, they'll probably be pretty minor comments, so our intention is to turn it around and get it back in for their final review and approval. Based upon that schedule, I would anticipate with no further delays or interruptions, no new COVID shutdowns or material supply chain issues, and we've all been experiencing that. Materials have been very inconsistent coming from different vendors, even local vendors, so we're all dealing with that. But the site should be all complete and ready to occupy January of 2022. So that's kind of a looking forward for you of around five and a half months or so of activity that'll be occurring. To date, we've also complied with all the CEQA mitigation monitoring program requirements regarding biological resources, cultural resources, geo and soils, tribal cultural resources, and again, the hydrology, water quality. It's in the final review with your staff and with your consulting plan checkers. So I think we've made a lot of progress. Seems like a simple project, but it has a lot of moving parts. The traffic management plan, I just want to go back to that real quick, because I think traffic has been, you know, the focal point of this whole operation. The traffic implementation for construction will happen as quickly as staff can return the plan and any comments they have, and then we will continue to work with staff and the city on the operations aspect for the project. We've provided a lot of information. The traffic management plan will be another aspect of that, and then we'll just scrub through the conditions, and I think in a very short order, we'll have a preliminary operations manual for the actual operations that speaks to all of the items that were raised during the public hearing. And that'll be forwarded to staff in ample time to, you know, not conflict with any potential opening in January. The exhibits I gave you, again, at your leisure, these are just showing the progress of the design aspects of Terrace Avenue frontage, the proposed community garden, which also has, you know, the parking area, raised bed planners, a citrus grove. And again, all of these documents will be provided to staff. We're continuing to get their input, and I would encourage you, if you have any input, to provide it to Mr. Weiss and let him deliver it in the manner in which we've established. Let's see. I believe, other than any questions you may have, that's kind of gives us a good overview of where we've been and what we're doing now and what our intentions are going forward. So be happy to answer any questions.
Right. Thank you for that overview. I appreciate that.
Sure.
Do council members have questions at this time? Mayor Protem Hussey?
Thank you. This is probably for Mr. Weiss. The signs that are down there right now, and I think some got removed, but I drove down there when, because a concerned citizen emailed me, and the signs were very confusing. And one sign I noticed, and I think it's probably the biggest area, if the trucks are going east and west on Mount Vernon, I mean Barton, and they go to Grand Terrace Road, there was this one little sign that said, "No trucks," and that was after you already made a commitment to Grand Terrace Road. Are we going to get signs on Barton Road by that traffic light indicating no left or right turns for the trucks? I think that might help. And then when you go further down Barton Road till you hit Terrace Avenue, it's kind of confusing, because right before you come to that bridge, there's a "No trucks" sign there. So is that telling not to go on the bridge, or is it telling not to go down Terrace Road? And I think that could be the confusion. Now, now going on that bridge, I see trucks go on that bridge all the time. So there's a lot of confusions on the signs, but I think the east and westbound Barton to Grand Terrace Road, indicating before they make that commitment for the turn, because once a truck driver makes that commitment at turn, he's already committed, and I think we're going to violation. And I'm hoping that the sheriffs will actually also do additional patrol down there to help curtail that, because as I can imagine, living down there and having all the truck traffic and stuff, and then that's just a project, and then we're getting more. But on the traffic mitigation, are you also going to have, like, flagmen telling where the trucks can go?
Councilmember, see, those are all good comments. We, admittedly, the traffic signage situation has been, is almost bigger than any project we've seen out there, just because of improvements to the roundabout, and, you know, Grand Terrace Road is one of the ones where apparently there's been issues with the GPS and other forms of technology that seems to lead people further down Grand Terrace. But you also, after, well, you have Newport Road, you've got, you do have activities going on in that neighborhood, other than Mr. O'Brien, but Mr. O'Brien is strictly conditioned to stay off Grand Terrace Road, on North Terrace Avenue. Flagmen, I think, might be an option to this, but I think actually to educate the drivers and for the city to take punitive action, should any of these trucks go into these neighborhoods, and they're not supposed to, is really what... and they're not supposed to, is really what the city is responsible for.
Mr. Weiss, what is our truck route? What roads are our truck routes that are established in Grand Terrace?
Well, there, I might have the Public Works Director comment on that, but I can generally give them to you. There are, to begin with Mount Vernon, Mount Vernon, I guess it would be east or south of Barton is actually a truck route. It's not going up the slope, that's not a truck route. Barton Road to the freeway actually will accommodate some trucks, you know, I mean, there's plenty of deliveries that have to go in the area. And jumping into Colton, La Cadena is a designated truck route, for sure, so that's where you'll see a great amount of trucks in the area. In general, we've done a pretty good job of keeping trucks. Everyone has their truck experience, so I'm not going to say that you haven't had a truck go through your neighborhood, but we do, the major, the major, major streets are either truck routes in sections or complete, but you know, Barton Road, for example, you know, to get to the freeway, obviously, you will get some truck traffic coming down the hill, but in general, we have ordinances to keep trucks off as pass-throughs, but it is a challenge. I'm not, you know, mincing words. Michigan, for example, you see trucks cutting down Michigan, but we have the sheriff, Lieutenant Lane will tell you, they regularly ticket trucks for cutting through these areas.
Well, I know in Michigan, when they built the high school, part of the CPU was that no buses were going to go down Michigan, and we had a long time fighting that with the school district until they finally decided to go down Mount Vernon to Maine. But yeah, that's just my issue that I see with the signs, and then wonder if we could get the flagman out there, this is a suggestion, and then the extra patrol, and really enforce the, you know, the penalties there for that. And I know, you know, because we even have issues in the city where truck drivers are parking, you know, and staying overnight, and so are roads, and we, and the city and the taxpayers spend a lot of money on these roads to fix it, so. That was just my concern, because I just noticed the signs, and that one little sign right by the trailer park, it's already too late for a little tiny, you know, you see a little sign and trucks going to be committed. So this is the observation I noticed, but I was a little confused on all the signs because I went down there and there's like, "No left, no this, no that, don't cross the bridge," and so I think the sign issue is the first step we need to do.
Truly appreciate your comments, and as far as truck parking in the city is not allowed, and we proactively ticket trucks.
Yes, I know. All right, thank you.
Councilmember Allen.
Thanks, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Menarski, for that, and Mr. Weiss, for those good reports. I would like to ask you, in your comments that you gave us earlier, Mr. Menarski, you mentioned that Robertson's cement truck came in. I'm just curious where you used the concrete at and what for?
For the encasement of the water mains that are underneath the surface. Riverside Highland, in them approving the improvement plans for the tie-in for the fire hydrants and for the lateral, we had to encase certain sections of their existing main to prevent any loading, unnecessary loading.
Okay. So, but is, is there any place on the property where there'll be a concrete pad poured?
Potentially, there could be a concrete pad poured for the caretaker security building at the entrance, which is, if you look at that top graphic, you'll see a little structure just at the, above the cul-de-sac in that landscape area.
Right.
But other than that...
Well, there will be, excuse me, Mr. Menarski, but there will be, the road, the entry road into the project will be AC.
Well, he's, the councilman's saying concrete versus asphalt. I mean, I'm not trying to mix words, I'm just, technically, concrete's different than asphalt, so.
Yeah, I understand, but, and the reason I asked specifically about that is that would indicate a permanent building structure, and I thought that the site was approved for temporary structures to be used, but not permanent.
Yeah. Well, and again, that, the base for that trailer, which is coming in for review shortly, it could be aggregate, it could be concrete slab, it's really something that I think the city just has to provide some direction.
Yeah, because I remember we discussed it and talked about it, like, in the future, if the business were to go away, the lands, the environment could be returned basically to what it was before, without doing something like that.
That's correct, and we're talking about a 20 by 80 building, and if it can be accommodated with just aggregate base compacted with the, with the structure on top of it, then that's fine, but we, yeah, we have no intention of, or the project has no intention of constructing any major permanent concrete improvements.
At this time, is there any access at all through the property to the San Ana River Trail? Or at all for someone who wants to go down there and...
We, well, I can't answer that question. Our limits end at the right-of-way, which is a little bit of a distance from the actual trail. I don't know if there has been an opening made by the city or anybody else to allow access, and as I indicated earlier, where we're actually working with your sister city or adjacent city to reroute access along the property to the trail system, but they're doing all the, the city of Colton is coordinating that with the county directly. We're just providing resources for them.
Yeah, I understand. See, I know on the map or the pictures you got us, it shows the actual, you know, there's dotted lines that show where it's going to be in the future, but, excuse me, some, there used to be more residents who used, who would access the San Ana River Trail from that location for equine equestrian riding, and now that's not possible. And so I occasionally get those questions from residents, because it's very dangerous to try to take a horse across La Cadena to access the San Ana River Trail from over there, from the park. And so that was my, you know, there's actually a board and care business there that has suffered from customers because they can't access their riding area, and so they moved to a different ranch so they can, you know, they don't have to trailer their horses out. And so that was why I was asking about access to the trail.
Well, and again, not to belabor this, but our obligation is to work with all of the agencies to provide that access.
Yeah.
The mechanics involved are, as you know, they're controlled by...
Well, that's fine, and I understand that you work with all the agencies, and that's great. I don't, and so I don't have a clue as to when, and if you, and I thought perhaps you might have an idea that, well, maybe by January of 2022, we'll have access to the San Ana River Trail, or, you know, September, or something like that.
We can, we can provide staff with an update, because I do know, again, that the city of Colton has been working on this access directly with County Flood Control. They've decided to take the lead because it's part of their project and rather than two entities, but I'll talk to the city staff in Colton and get back with your city manager.
Okay. Thanks so much.
You bet.
And Mayor, I don't think I have anything else. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Allen. Any further questions?
If I could just...
Sure.
I know you want to get on with your evening, but I think the councilman's comments about signage are very appropriate. Part of the management plan that you're going to see, or the staff's going to see, does address your signage in the general vicinity, far beyond the project. There is some inadequacy in the signage. During construction, part of the plan is also to implement operations for construction, which would be the 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM, whatever that duration is, and have Caltrans-approved temporary signs at all the intersections, kind of like when you go to an intersection and you see work going on, you know, the A-frame signs where, you know, it says, "No left turn, no right turn," so those signs are part of this plan, and those signs will be put up and taken down Monday through Saturday. That's part of the sign package. And then the permanent signs, we're making recommendations on how to upgrade and enhance other areas outside of the immediate project area that talk about things like, you know, no truck turning, or no trucks where you do have trucks that are permitted, no trucks over certain tonnages, for example, five tons, things of that nature. So I think, I think the city will be well-served by implementing the new sign program.
My question for you is...
Yes, ma'am.
Through your interaction with your contract with Robertson's and their use of subcontractors who didn't seem to understand the message that they were given, what lessons learned have you taken from that with respect to going forward with your traffic management?
Well, Madam Mayor, it's funny because we talked about that, because when we got a copy of the ticket from Robertson's, and it said specifically on the ticket where the trucks were supposed to go, it was merely somebody not reading. It wasn't not being given the direction. So we contacted, and we will be contacting all vendors and going through very specific dialogue with them as far as if they want to work on this project, what the regulations, the operating hours, the no idling before a certain hour, things of that nature. It's communication, and unfortunately, that's part of every operation. You can have rules and regs and policies, but if you have, if you don't look for the what-ifs and try to communicate that, so that's what we've taken away from this. We're just going to have to be a little bit more forceful, and we still encourage the community and city staff to point out any issues that they experience. Mr. Weiss knows we also have, we're working on other properties in your city, and we've dealt with homelessness and illegal dumping and things of that nature, and I think, without an exception, we're not doing the illegal dumping and we're not, but we respond almost immediately to any of the concerns that are raised by either your business owners or your residents, so.
And so when you have a caretaker on site, is that somebody that will also be vigilant as to whether your associated trucks are using the appropriate route?
Well, are you talking construction or operations, or both?
Well, I know that the caretaker booth is going to be for operations.
Right.
But will there, so when they are on site, yes, and then in the interim for the construction period, will you, at this point going forward, have somebody that will be looking for that on site as well?
Well, yeah, the construction operations, once they're in full gear, once they're moving forward, there will be a project manager superintendent, and I don't want to commit to this, but we've also told the traffic management firm to give us a price for manned intersections, so that is certainly not out of the question. If we, if we experience, or the city experiences, any irregularities, maybe not a violation, but they just don't like what's happening, then we just need to move to the next level and do what we need to do.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Madam City Clerk, do you have a request to speak on this item?
Yes, Madam Mayor, and for the record, the landscape enhancement exhibit has been placed up at the counter for the public to view.
All right, thank you. Our first request to speak is from Edward Giroux.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. For disclosure, I'm also a member...
I'm also a member of the Planning Commission. Been there for six years. My reason here today is twofold, not just for the discussion of commercial vehicles on Barton Road, but the citywide lack of proper signage for commercial vehicle use on highways within the city of Grand Terrace. Before the O'Brien Project was approved by city council, I discussed options to control the commercial vehicle traffic in the West Side Residential District, as well as other commercial zones within the city where large commercial vehicles would be driving on roadways not designed for larger commercial vehicles. When the O'Brien Project was approved by this council, councilmembers recommended staff to contact me to discuss the options that I did prior to the approval of the O'Brien Project. To date, I have not been contacted. With that said, I appreciate the attempts of signage being made on Grand Terrace Road, Vivienda Avenue, and Terrace Road. However, the placement of some of these signs, the regulatory signs specifically, are not properly installed or in a location where they need to be installed. The restrictions are not appropriate and are not really effective traffic control devices for the operators who's going to be driving on the road right now. The manual on uniform traffic control devices, which is part of the traffic manual, which this city follows DOT's traffic manuals, clearly states, "Signs should be used only where required and justified by engineering judgment, studies, results from traffic engineering studies, or physical or traffic factors should indicate the locations where the signs are deemed necessary or desirable. Roadway geometry," and that's important for the West Side, "roadway geometry design and sign application should be coordinated so that the signs can be effectively placed to give the road user any necessary regulatory advice." So we need to give them proper notice way in advance before they get on that road. I just said that, I summarized that. Now, I realize, ever since this project was approved, I believe it was back in April, there's been a lot of changes in staff as far as with the, with the Public Works Department, so that might have been one of the reasons why I wasn't notified. But now is the time, that the study, that what I'm trying to get at is, this is our opportunity now, not just for this project, but for all the commercial zones within our city, that staff can have a plan when a developer comes, can be presented to them and say, "Okay, if you want to go here, here's the conditions for commercial vehicles." And I think that's real important. It's fair to the developers, the community, as well as the users of the road. I have a bunch of other stuff I could talk about, but now, from what I understand, is that the traffic plan has not been submitted to the city yet, so I can, I'll stop right here, and I will take any questions that councilmembers may have.
Thank you, Mr. Giroux. This is public comment, and so what I will tell you is I appreciate you being here and I appreciate your remarks, and I will make sure that you get an introduction to our new Public Works Director.
Thank you, ma'am.
Our next speaker is Juanita Odenbaugh.
Good evening. I live in 21811 Vivienda Avenue in Grand Terrace. No big trucks in my neighborhood. Read the CUP. It said zero tolerance. It didn't say after 10 or 20 people calling to decide to shut it down. That was very disappointing. I came to two meetings. The first meeting, you approved it. Second meeting, came to City Hall, you approved it. I was looking like, okay, well, I'll work with this, because it happens, it's going to happen, it got approved, and I'm trying to work with it. But when stuff like this happens and people that make up these CPUs and sign off on all of them, better start reading them, because it said zero tolerance in our neighborhood, and I didn't appreciate all of it, any at all. Water trucks going down my street, diesel trucks almost hitting my 78-old mother because she can't get out of her neighborhood because there's another business that keeps the, the employees are all parked on the side. It's very disturbing, it's very hurtful, so in the future, when you make, get into commitment, you get into a marriage with the developer, it sounds like a pretty bad marriage so far, because here we are trying to mediate and try to figure out things, figure it out before you get into bed with these people, that they're not nice people, okay? They're not, developers don't care, and you are my city, and I don't like coming up here and saying anything negative about my city. And in a few years, I got to sell my house. How am I going to sell my house if all my streets are torn up because of all the trucks? You got to give me some help. You gotta give me some help here. So next time when I call, I would appreciate immediate response. So when I called on the 21st, no, the 19th, and I even took a picture, and I believe you all have a picture of that truck and the sign next to it, I talked to the sheriff deputy this morning. He said, "Call the sheriff." And I said, "Well, I called the city." Well, then the city should have called him. Probably never called him. And and that's disturbing, when that link is messed up, because you have a weak link somewhere, and you need to fix it. And it's not fun coming up here and talking about my neighborhood like that. You're in my view shed, Mr. O'Brien. It's my property. I could see you 24/7, 365 days out of the week, and I know the phone numbers to call. And now I'm just gonna keep on calling the sheriff, because this is ridiculous. So I'd appreciate it if you all would just get it together, because you're in this marriage and there's a lot more people out there that are trying to survive, getting out of their driveways and trying to get to work. So thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Odenbaugh. Appreciate your comments. Next speaker is Bobby Forbes.
Thank you. So a lot's already been said, and I'm certainly thinking, we didn't have this trouble with the trucks in our neighborhood when Stater Brothers was here. As soon as Lineage took over, we had trucks where the drivers don't speak English, or they pretend they don't speak English, they just, I don't know, you couldn't talk to them. Jeffrey McConnell and I used to try and get them out of our neighborhood all the time. I don't even try anymore. I kind of get a kick out of watching them be lost. The Robertson ready-mix truck stopped in front of my house. He put his hands up like this at me, and I took his picture. And that's one of the ones that went down to your site as a lost soul. I saw him down there about an hour later. But he was definitely confused. He came past my house from Walnut, so that means he was on Terrace, and I think you mentioned that he might have come from Terrace. Then he turned right on the bridge and went back to Grand Terrace Road, so he probably went roundabout. But there was a double trailer, there was a flatbed trailer that was supposed to be picking up equipment probably, or dropped off equipment and was going back for it, that have all been in the neighborhoods. Our streets are old. They're not made for these trucks. And the tree trimming company seems to have forgotten the rules, because they've started coming through the neighborhood past my house again, where they didn't for a long time. But I think it's just, nobody else is enforcing anything, so they might as well try. When they first came, they didn't even have the employees drive down burns. They tried to keep them on Terrace, because they're all tired, they're hot-rodding it, they want to get home, they're going past my little short street at probably 40 miles an hour, and they shouldn't even be doing 20 by the time they get past my house. So we're just not built for it. I I think it's gonna be a major project to get Terrace going. The signs are terrible that we already have. They need to be bigger, they need to be before you get to the intersection, just like Mr. Allen said and Mr. Giroux said. You don't give the trucks the opportunity to read the sign and react. You're not telling them before they get there. You're telling them when they're there that they can't turn, they've already turned. The signs are too small, I said that. There need to be more of them. And this last week has been certainly a problem for the neighborhood with the different trucks. We appreciate you trying, but we need you to take care of it, not just try. I spoke with Patrick O'Brien one day. He was stopping trucks on Grand Terrace Road at Vivienda. He said he'd stopped five already. It was 10 o'clock in the morning. But by the time they got to him, they were already in a bad place. How are they gonna get turned at that corner? It just doesn't work, you know? All of the signage needs to be changed, whether it be at the city of Grand Terrace's cost or your project cost. Somebody needs to do it. We appreciate it, but don't destroy roads. They're already bad enough because they're so old. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Forbes. That was my last request to speak, so we will finish our special presentation here, and we will move on to our consent calendar. I know that staff will follow up with all the comments that were made. So the consent calendar items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by City Council at one time without discussion. Any council member, staff member, or citizen may request removal of an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Are there any requests to remove an item from the consent calendar? All right, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion for the balance of the consent calendar.
Ma'am Mayor, I'll move the consent calendar for approval.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Allen, second by Mayor Protem Hussey. Madam City Clerk, if you'd call a vote, please.
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hussey?
Yes.
Mayor Magna Bo?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. So we have time for public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to speak on items not occurring on the agenda. Because of restrictions contained in California laws, City Council may not discuss or act on any item, but may briefly respond to statements made or ask a question for clarification. Items may also have a brief response from staff, and questions raised during the meeting or public comment may be addressed after the issues. We also may agendize items for future meetings. Request to speak at this time, Madam City Clerk. Thank you. Bobby Forbes?
Did I say I'm gonna talk on this, right? What does it say? Forbes?
Parking Grand Terrace Road.
Okay, thank you. So a few years ago, seven, eight years ago, when Fitness Park came in, the curb along the east side of Grand Terrace Road from Barton Road down to the park was painted red. You can't read it anymore that it's red, or you can't see that it's red anymore. But the people that live in the park and their guests know that it's red, so they don't park there. So instead, they're parking across the street, on the west side of the street, in people's yards, which is the easement area from their fences to the street. So it's the grass that they maintain, and these people are leaving their cars there overnight, days at a time. Sometimes they're getting sited, sometimes they're getting towed, but they're also killing that area that's being maintained by the homeowner. So my request, please, let's go back and get rid of that red curb that you can't read anyway, or see anyway, and let the people that live and visit at the mobile home park park on their side of the street, so that the people that are being disturbed by all of these nighttime visitors aren't being disturbed by the nighttime visitors. You pull up in front of the house, there's car lights coming in their windows, people are turning around in their driveways, they're parking there overnight. Just please take into consideration whatever department needs to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Forbes. Anne Wade Hornsby?
I live at 22594 Eaton Drive, and I'm here to talk about our dog park, which my husband and I use with our 95-pound Doberman twice a day, every day that we can. We got him last year, and he would do things to our house that are unmentionable if we didn't get him there. But we've also visited the parks in Riverside, Redlands, Loma Linda, and ours is by far the nicest. I mean, it's a pleasure to go there, except when it's closed, you can't, and then you have to go somewhere else. The one-a-là-cadina is closest, and it's really nice, too, but it's not as nice as ours. The thing is that on rainy days and on every Wednesday, it's closed like all day. And I, my husband and I are, and by the way, I'm not the only, I'm representing other people that feel like we do, too. We'd like to have it open possibly for half the day on Wednesday. Now, Riverside Dog Park, which is way bigger than this one, is closed Thursday mornings. The one-a-là-cadina's never closed, I mean, even in the eve, ever. If there's some way we could possibly just have half of Wednesday closed so that the evening people could use it, especially in summer, because nobody wants to use it during the day, it's just too hot. We go there early in the morning, and my husband was gonna, is gonna go there as soon as I get the car home, because we only have one car the dog fits in. So anyway, what we'd like to ask is that you consider having the park open half a day on Wednesday, if you can. And like yesterday, when it rained, it rained into the morning, what, here, about 8:00? And it was beautiful the rest of the day, and it was, but the park was closed all day because it rained. And it says right on the, you know, directions that it's closed on rainy days, which in the winter you can see, and normally it wouldn't take up a whole lot of, you know, days, because it hardly ever rains. But yesterday would have been perfect for us to be able to go, you know, to the dog park in the evening. And that was just something that we all wanted, I mean, several of us wanted to bring up, because a lot of people use that dog park. It's just really nice. I'm really glad we have it. We just need to be able to use it more. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wade Hornsby. And I know staff has made notes. So we have, we will close public comment at this time. We have no public hearings. We have no unfinished business. So we will move on to our new business. And the first item is an approval of the interim city manager employment agreement. So Mr. Adrian Guerra, City Attorney, will start us off, and I understand we have someone else who will be presenting tonight.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Each year, my law firm hires law students to come in and serve as law clerks for the summer. And one of the law clerks expressed interest in coming and doing a project here in Grand Terrace. And so I thought, once we had negotiated the terms of the agreement, I thought it'd be a good opportunity for him to draft a staff report and also come and present it tonight. And so with that, I will turn it over to Joshia Mary Garcia, and have him briefly introduce himself, and then present the item for your consideration.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, and members of the Grand Terrace City Council. My name is Joshua Mary Garcia, and I'm a law clerk with Alice Shire and Winder. Thank you for this opportunity. The item today is the approval of the interim city manager agreement, and this is for Mr. G. Michael Milheiser, who we have here tonight, and I will request to come and introduce himself and say a few words at the end of this presentation. Now, a little bit of background on this agreement is, on June 22nd, 2021, the former city manager, G. Harold Duffy, announced his resignation, and his resignation became effective on July 20th, 2021. As a result, this council selected an executive firm, Ralph Anderson and Associates, to conduct an open recruitment to permanently fill the city manager position. Now, until that city manager position is filled, the city will require the services of an interim city manager, or I I believe he was referred to as an acting city manager for the time being.
Our, our planning and development services director has been our acting city manager during this time.
Got it, got it. My apologies.
That's, no, it's okay, just for clarification.
Okay. So Mr. Michael Milheiser brings a breadth of a professional experience to the city of Grand Terrace through his service in public and private sectors. He brings an impressive education with a master's in government from Claremont Graduate University, a bachelor's in political science from Chapman University, and he brings nearly 30 years of experience serving at the capacity of either city administrator, city manager for the cities of Montclair, Upland, and Ontario during the periods of 1978 through 2005. I believe also during his time in Ontario, he oversaw the Ontario Mills Retail Project. Most recently, he's also served as interim city manager for two local cities, Adelanto up in the High Desert and Fontana. And in the private sector, he also served 10 years as chief administrative officer for the Morongo Band of Mission Indians, and is interim executive director for the Tri-City Mental Health Agency in Pomona. In addition to all of this experience, he brings some community service, where currently he is the board member of the Monte Vista Water District, and was also a former board member for the White Foundation, the YMCA Metro, and has served as past president of the Mont- Montclair Kiwanis Club and West End United Way. Now, there's two specific terms that I'd like to make note of in this interim city manager agreement. The first is the term of employment, where the agreement becomes effective on July 28th, 2021, that would be tomorrow, with an automatic termination date of June 30th, 2022. However, this agreement can be terminated earlier if this council appoints a permanent replacement for the position. The second item I'd like to bring to the council's attention is the compensation, where the compensation will be $17,916 with 67 cents per month. Now, this is the exact same salary as the prior city managers, and one last condition is that the interim city manager will not be eligible eligible to receive, to receive any benefits other than this $17,000 per month salary, as outlined in the agreement. Does the council have any, have any questions?
Thank you very much for that report. Are there questions at this time?
And then I'd just like to bring up Mr. Milheiser, if you'd like to come and say a few words.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council, and members of the community. I was quite impressed with the first item you had tonight with expressing traffic concerns on a project and the Mr. Weiss's presentation, as well as the questions asked by the city council and members of the community. And we'll try and address and make sure that we get those concerns taken care of. I'm excited to work for the city of Grand Terrace. It's an opportunity for me to continue in the profession that I've always loved, which is that of the city management, and working with elected officials. And most importantly, also, working with the community. So I will be happy to have my number, phone number, cell number, home number, put anywhere so that residents can always get a hold of me, seven days a week, because sometimes, obviously, this last Saturday, there was a problem with the project with trucks, or excuse me, Sunday, with someone working on Sunday, which that should never happen, but, you know, things do happen. But the corrective action that we'll try and take, well, I'm here for those kind of events, so we don't have them in the future, I'll try and do for you. But I really appreciate the mayor and the council's confidence in me to serve in this capacity, and I'll do everything I can to continue the, what I consider great momentum that the city of Grand Terrace has in development and in taking care of their residents. Thank you very much, and we'll see you tomorrow.
Thank you, Mr. Milheiser. Are there any questions of staff at this time? All right, seeing none, I'll open public comment. Are there any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, we'll close public comment and bring it back to council for consideration of a motion and any further discussion.
Motion for approval, ma'am.
I'll second it.
Okay, so motion by Councilmember Wilson, second by Councilmember Allen. Madam City Clerk, will you call the, well, is there any further discussion? Councilmember Hussey.
You know, I love Mr. Milheiser's experience, and I heard nothing but good things about him. But my only concern, as brought up before, is the salary. I don't agree on the salary, so I'm just making a public note of that, so, yeah, I don't believe in bringing in somebody in the top of the pay scale when they just start. That's my concern, and pretty conservative on that, so that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Hussey. Any further comments? All right, Madam City Clerk, will you call the vote, please?
Councilmember Allen?
Yeah, yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hussey?
No.
Mayor Magna Bo?
Yes.
Motion passes four to one.
Thank you. Welcome aboard, Mr. Milheiser. And I'll call you bright and early tomorrow.
Okay. Look forward to it.
All right. So item number seven, or, okay, so item number eight is our next item, which is a committee for considering naming of T-Ball Field at Veterans Freedom Park. Debra Thomas, city clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of council. Before you this evening, as a committee, a recommendation for a committee to consider naming the T-Ball Field at Veterans Freedom Park. This staff report supports goal number four, to develop and implement successful partnerships, working collaboratively with community groups, private and public sector agencies, to facilitate the delivery of services benefiting youth, seniors, and our community, additionally working with local, regional, and state agencies to secure funding for programs and projects. On July 28th, 2015, City Council approved Resolution Number 201530, establishing policies and procedures for the naming of city-owned land, building, and facilities. This procedure calls for the mayor to send any request for the naming or renaming of city-owned land, buildings, and facilities to the appropriate city council subcommittee or establish a special council subcommittee called a Facility Naming Committee. City staff received a request on June 22nd from resident Sherri Freund, who incidentally is also on our Parks and Rec Committee, to officially name Veterans Freedom Park's T-Ball Field after local resident Kyle Robert Garcia Bacon, who grew up in the community but sadly lost his battle with cancer several years ago. Because this is a naming, a renaming request, staff conducted due diligence reviewing the city records to ensure that renaming would not jeopardize previous funding restrictions, of which none were found. Additionally, staff would normally review renaming requests to review original names historical or emotional- names' historical or emotional significance to the community before the request is forwarded to the mayor, along with the request for the name change. Lastly, staff was unable to locate any city records officially naming the T-Ball Field by the city council. Therefore, at this time, it is staff's recommendation to forward the request to the appropriate council or committee, or appointment of a council subcommittee to be called Facility Naming Committee, and officially name the T-Ball Field for the record located at Veterans Freedom Park Kyle's Field. That's the end of my staff report. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. So the recommendation is to send the opportunity to perhaps name, but the recommendation isn't at this time to name the field?
It is to establish a committee based on your policy, to have one or two, obviously two members of council, to have a meeting to discuss the naming of, officially naming the T-Ball Field to Kyle's Field.
Okay. And then that will, and then that would come back?
It would come back within, they have to have the meeting within 30 days, but no later than three, bringing back no later than three meetings beyond this date.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Are there questions for staff at this time? Councilmember Allen?
So today, today what we're doing is we're gonna form a subcommittee. Is that what we're gonna do?
Yes, Councilmember Allen.
Okay. And, yeah, I just wanted to be clear on that.
Any further questions? All right. Any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor, other than, I did receive a phone call from Vice Chair Julia Fernkis, as well as committee member Sherri Freund, who do support this, this recommendation.
Okay. Thank you very much. So we'll close public comment and bring it back to council for consideration of motion and discussion.
Hey, Mayor, I have a, I'd like to make a motion so I can discuss it. So I'll make the first motion.
All right. Councilmember Allen, what's your motion?
Oh, you want me to make the motion to?
Well, what, what, what shall we discuss?
Oh, now I forgot.
So, so what is your motion?
Oh, here's what I was gonna ask is, is this, is this the procedure that we're required to follow? In other words, if someone on the, sits up here on the dais who wanted to make the motion tonight to name the field, Kyle's Field, is, or would that be going, would that be going outside of protocol? Do we, do we need to form the subcommittee, and do we need to have the discussion and bring it back and all that? Is that what we're required to do?
Well, my understanding is that our policy is that we either form a subcommittee, or we give it to a, an existing committee to discuss it and do whatever research necessary, and then bring back the recommendation. Is that, is that clear?
That is correct, and I'll also add one other point, that the procedure's required that that subcommittee meet with the public, so that they can provide input before it comes back to the council.
Can that subcommittee or committee be a, a committee that already exists? Like, say, for example, E.G., Parks and Rec?
Yes, the way the, the policy reads it, an appropriate subcommittee, or establish a new subcommittee.
Okay.
So, yes.
Yeah. So my motion would be, then, that the Parks and Rec Committee be the committee used to make the recommendation to council, that the Parks and Rec be the Facility Naming Committee? Is that, is that how I should say it?
Mr. City Attorney?
So do we, I, to confirm, do we have a Parks and Rec Subcommittee, council subcommittee?
We have a Parks and Rec Committee.
Okay.
But there are not, there are not council members that are part of that committee.
Correct. So the policy requires it to be a council.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, that was mine. Thank you for that. So then it needs to be the couple of us? Okay.
Correct.
Well, then I make a motion that we form a subcommittee and call it the Facility Naming Committee, and I will, in that motion, I will put myself on the committee, or volunteer, or, you know, step up to be a part of it.
You're requesting to be on that committee as part of your, part of your motion? Okay.
And you know what? If that needs to be a two-part motion, so that the first part gets through, if you don't want me on the committee, if somebody else wants to be, but...
Let's, let's start with this.
Okay.
I know Councilmember Allen would like to be on this committee. Are there any members of the council that would be, like to be on this committee as well? Okay, Mayor Protem Hussey would like to. So would you like to restate your motion, then?
I would like to make a motion, then, that Councilmember Hussey and myself be the Facility Naming Committee for consideration of naming the T-Ball Field at Veterans Freedom Park.
All right. Is there a second for that?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? All right. So the motion is that Councilmember Allen and Mayor Protem Hussey will be our Facility Naming Committee. Motion by Councilmember Allen, second by Mayor Protem Hussey. If there's no further discussion, please call the vote.
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles? Mayor Protem Hussey?
Yes.
Mayor Magna Bo?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right. Thank you to Mayor Protem and Councilmember for volunteering to serve on this committee. We have no request to speak, or no request for future added items at this time, so we will have City Council Communications, beginning with Councilmember Jeff Allen. Any reports tonight?
Thanks, Mayor. I do. I went today to the first post-pandemic Coffee with a Cop, and it was great. And Lieutenant Lane was there, and the whole, gosh, the whole crew was there. I didn't know we had so many cops here in Grand Terrace. I know they're not here all the time, but, yeah, great-looking crew of cops there, and the detectives were there, and, and I was really, really pleased to see that we, our COPs were there, too. That was great, seeing some of our COPs out there. And I'd like to really encourage, I'd really like to encourage our residents who have an interest in giving back to the community, that being a COP is, is a great way to do that. It's, it doesn't require much. But anyway, so we, we were there for, gosh, it was about over an hour, and the, I just wanted to mention that the subject, that the residents that dominated the discussion the most, coincidentally, was traffic. There, there were a lot of discussions about traffic, truck traffic, cars and drivers using bypass streets to, to avoid downtown and speeding traffic, running stop signs, and I know Lieutenant Lane said that they're gonna be paying close attention to this, and I think that, based on that discussion we saw today, that maybe we need to think about having a discussion about implementing some traffic calming devices to discourage drivers on our streets from using our streets the way they're not designed, like for speeding and bypassing and things like that. That's, but that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Allen. Councilmember Doug Wilson?
Thank you, Mayor. As you can see, I'm not there. I know that the mayor and I had a slight discussion about my physical well-being here recently. What has happened in the last month, not being a, one of those type of people that have back problems, I all of a sudden ended up with a very severe back condition, and apparently it started with my spine, and went to emergency, spent some time there, and I'm now, fortunately, as of yesterday, on a program for, in, receiving antibiotics by Intro. So at this point, I'm hoping a lot that this will help. At this point, I am pretty much homebound, can't really walk more than about a few feet, and I'm glad my wife is here. I love her, and I greatly appreciate all the health that she's given me in this time. And we're hoping that within the next 10 weeks, I will be finished with this procedure and, and be back and ready to turn cartwheels inside the city council chambers. So that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilson, and I look forward to that day that you come back. Councilmember Sylvia Robles?
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing to report, but I just learned that Commissioner Rivera's wife has passed away, and I just want to extend my heartfelt condolences to Mr. Rivera. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem, Bill Hussey?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I want to thank Mr. Weiss for your acting this week, and I'm sure you had a good time. And, um, a lot of fun. And I also want to thank Lieutenant Lane and all his deputies for putting on that Coffee with a Cop. It was great seeing everybody out there again, and, you know, having fellowship and talking, you know, to your officers, and, you know, God bless them, and, you know, it was just nice seeing them, you know, and I know they do a lot of work here, and like I said on their thing, you know, I just, they keep Grand Terrace safe. I also want to make sure that they get home safe with their family. You know, they, they do a lot, and I see them everywhere. But, yeah, like Councilmember Allen said, you know, the main thing was traffic issues, and, you know, how they bypass, people bypass the stop signs. They think that's a suggestion, and there's no such thing as a California rule anymore. It's just, now they just go right through it. But, you know, thank you for all the hard work that they do, and thank you for putting on that thing today, and it really, you know, it's neat seeing the public get back into it, and, and they really appreciate it. And then I want to welcome aboard Mr. Milheiser, you know, welcome to the city, and that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. So I will start by recognizing our Scott Ward, Representative for Supervisor, Don Rao. Thank you so much for being here tonight. And I will echo Mayor Protem's thank you to our acting city manager. I think you got a full dose this week, so I'm sure you'll look at your, your regular scheduled job a little bit differently. Maybe you'll be glad to just get back to that, and it's quiet, and nothing going on in planning and development. Now, thank you very much for all the work that you put in this week.
Thank you, Mayor and council. It's truly an honor to serve you.
And that's where I'm gonna end, and so I will turn it over to you, Mr. Weiss, if you have any communications for us at this time.
I do. There's a couple of areas, let's see, do we have, let me see if I can, okay, that's good enough. There will be a meeting on August 12 with the Parks and Recreation Committee. It will be a discussion, a community outreach discussion, to discuss Public Skate Park. And it will be a discussion, just, so, obviously, it should be an interesting time, and it's at, it'll be held 6:30 on August 12 in the Community Room. Okay? The next item is, this is being held in Loma Linda this year, they alternate it, but it's National Night Out 2021. So it will be August 3, and it will be from 6:00 to 8:30 at the Stater Brothers on Barton Road in Loma Linda, and highly encourage all Grand Terrace residents to attend. It's a good, it's a good, good thing to do. Lieutenant Lane and I were talking about that today, and, and it's one of, one of the great events to attend. Being that, those are my comments, and I, again, I thank you for your support, and I'll get back to my planning job.
It's very important that you do that. I'm glad that, I'm glad that you're still alive to do it. So, we have no closed session tonight. I'm pretty excited about that. We will adjourn to our next regular city council meeting, which will be held on Tuesday, August 10, 2021, at 6:00 p.m. Any request to have an item placed on future agenda must be made in writing and submitted to the city clerk's office, and the request will be processed in accordance with council procedures. So thank you all for, for your attention tonight, and to those of you that came out and, and shared your perspectives with us. I, I very much appreciate that. We are adjourned.